I now call a call to the April 25th, 2016 meeting of the New Kenney Independent School District Board of Trustees at 6:32 PM. Let the minute show of form is present with all members in attendance and Ms. Shipley being absent. Please rise for the indication to be given by Mr. Kern and remain standing. Pledge allegiance and honor the Texas flag been led by Mr. Morose.
Please bow. During the following we ask you a special blessing over tonight's meeting that we do and you lead us in all that we do and make good decisions for our district. We ask blessing over our administration, over our teachers and our students. Again, we do love you and praise you and thank you for all you do and please lead us in God is all we do. Jesus in our crehement.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the brother and sister who stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one safe under God, one indivisible.
Item two on the agenda is athletic recognition. We have student athletes of the month presented by Mr. Bruce Seitz.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Again, this month we've got four worthy nominees and we'll go through here and talk a little bit about them and coaches were very kind and said a lot of good things about them. We'll get started with Anna McFarlane, Porter High School. Coach Short, Anna's a junior at Porter High School. Coach Short says Anna's been a part of our varsity softball program at Porter for three years now. She is a huge asset to our program both offensively and defensively. She's been our number one pitcher the past two years and has done outstanding and has been an outstanding leader on and off the field. She's currently leading the team with a 500 batting average, two home runs, and eight RBIs in district play. She also has an impressive 103 strikeouts in 10 district ballgames. This young lady is a competitor and has so much love and passion for the game. All right, from New Kenney High School, Sam Paget. Sam was a senior cheerleader at New Kenney High School and Coach Bose talks about her and she says Sam is a dedicated and talented cheerleader. She leads her team in the classroom by example. She's extremely respectful and coachable. She is one that we can always count on to get the job done. She's frequently been found taking initiative to get things accomplished without being asked. She is always prepared and knows the material before taking the field or the floor. She's a very talented young lady with a great character and she will be missed in our program next year. All right, now for boys from Porter High School, Greg Heather. Greg's a senior on the baseball team at Porter High School and Coach Roland says Greg has been an unbelievable player for our team this year. He's leading the team in hits, average, double plays, and has an on-base percentage of 1.342. I'm exactly sure what that is, but it sounds good. During district play this year, his laughter and work ethic bring everyone up daily. His personality is infectious and brightens everyone he is around. He is a student of the game and is still trying to improve his craft after playing at a high level. After every bat, he wants to learn and build off what he just saw. In addition to all this, he excels in the classroom as well. Greg has done a great job this year. It's been a pleasure to coach. Congratulations. All right, from New Kenney High School, Jordan Cracker. Jordan's a senior on the baseball team at New Kenney High School. Coach Thane says for the month of March, Jordan led the Eagles with a .333 batting average. He had three RBIs, scored five runs, and two stolen bases. As a pitcher, he was one and one with three strikeouts. Jordan's defensive contribution has been steady for the Eagles' success. He is a great leader by example and demonstrates a tremendously solid work ethic. And we look forward to watching Jordan next year as he advances to the next level playing baseball. Congratulations.
All right, if I could get those student athletes and coaches, we need to back here for a few minutes. Item three on the agenda is consideration of out-of-state field trip for Porter High School Skills USA. Yancey.
We have three more teams qualify for nationals since the last board meeting. Our health science and technology had a team qualify, our criminal justice, and our firefighter are all going to nationals and that's going to be in Louisville, Kentucky, June 19th through the 24th. We're asking to approve that trip and the funds will be paid for with the current table.
Are there any questions for further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip for Porter High School Skills USA? Motion's been moved and seconded. There be no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion is approved. We're going to move on item number nine on the agenda. Item nine on the agenda is to review potential bond refunding plan and to take action to adopt an order authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds, establishing the parameters for the refunding, and delegating authority to the administration to complete the refunding bond sale presented by Mr. Brian Groves.
Thank you. Good evening. Brian Groves of San Antonio Capital Markets, partners with Doug Witt, who serves as interest rate finance advisor under bond program. Here tonight to give you an update on interest rates if you've got another bond refinancing to consider. So with that, this first page, first tab, page two there, is a look at bond buyers and municipal bonds. This is a national index that updates every Friday. This past Friday, it updated far right at 3.28 percent. It's not the bottom of the market. We reached the bottom of this market index at a 3.27 twice, December of 2012, February of 2016. But it does paint the picture that interest rates are extremely low. So bonds that you have previously sold, similar to how homeowners refinance a mortgage, you've got some bonds outstanding that you want to refinance. Take the higher interest rates that you're currently paying on, choose those that lower, to lower your overall bond payment and just create capacity because we know here's a district we have the bonds to issue. The next tab, next page, is a look at comparison between what's non-bank qualified and bank qualified basis. You're given $10 million limit threshold from January 1st to December 31st where you can sell bonds on what's called a bank qualified basis. The bottom line here is if you look at the bottom of the page comparing the yields in red with bank qualified on the right, you'll see a 10-year yield at 1.85 compared to a 2% on a non-bank qualified basis, a 25-year at a 3.40 compared to a 3.70. Given the fact that your construction fund that you currently have has more than you need to get through the rest of this calendar year, you as a district do not necessarily need to sell any bonds for new construction at this time. So we're going to take that opportunity to refinance as much as we can underneath this $10 million limit for this calendar year 2016 to capture those lower interest rates which will in turn just realize more interest costs. I did want to point out the reason for this financing is there because there is an interest rates benefit to keeping it at $10 million for the rest of this calendar year. Page four is a look at your outstanding debt service profile. Dark columns there represent the net debt service, the 50 cents that you levy locally generates the money to collect that. Light green and light blue represent the estimated IFA and EDA state aid. So that 50 cents generates approximately $15.4 million in net revenues. That's going to come into play when we talk about your INS fund balance in just a moment. This is a very solid debt service profile with the growing tax base, with more bonds to sell. You've actually got a declining profile which is very rare for the fast that the district does if you would have been growing to have this profile. Next page is a look at your INS fund balance. Historically going all the way back to 2005, 2006, you had a very strong INS fund balance. Just as a reminder, these INS fund balances essentially your savings account on that INS side. You can only use those monies to repay debt service and you can see the history here going all the way back to 2005, 2006 where you currently are. And a little over $5.5 million is the estimate without a planned use of some of those funds or potentially $4.750. And we'll talk about our plan to use a portion of that so that when we refinance, not only are we going to take out some of the old standing principal, but we want to use a portion of this existing INS fund balance and just go ahead and pay some of it off completely. So we're going to reduce the payment with the interest cost savings from the refinancing. We want to take the INS fund balance and just pay off principal and not reissue it. Typically, general rule of thumb, we'd like to see anywhere from 10 to 15 percent of your net debt service payment, which from the previous slide is about $15 million. So a million five or a little more than that, you're very healthy. So this is going to help you as a district to continue to sell bonds and manage that INS tax rate expectation. These are just a couple of bullets. I won't go into each of these in details, but when we look at refinancing for your district because we know that this is a district that's going to continue to need to sell bonds to address facilities, we never want to just rush out there and refinance. You have enough outstanding series of bonds that we can group a number of them together. But what we're trying to do is make sure that we are patient in order to maximize your savings. Refinancing this year on a bank qualified basis, taking advantage of that lower interest rate helps us maximize those savings. You have bonds that we could consider, but those bonds are not callable for a few years. And the bottom line to our review when we look at whether to do it now or later is we look at the savings available today versus the savings available to us if we wait. Because what you do in a refinancing is you set those money aside in an escrow account. So if that interest rate on those bonds is about 4 or 5 percent, you're going to put it into an escrow account and it's earning maybe 1.5 to 1 percent. So the closer you get to the call date, the more efficient, the more savings that we can capture. This is a look at your next few series of bonds that we are looking at and targeting. With the Series 2008 bonds being the ones that we want to carve out a portion of that $16.8 million that is refinanceable. We want to carve out about $9 million, pay off some of it with existing INS fund balance, and then refinance the balance. Once we complete that, you'll have a portion that remains outstanding that we will look to refinance with your next bond sale potentially next calendar year. Then you've also, as you can see, bonds that were sold in 2009, 2010, they're all outstanding at interest rates that range from 4 to 5 percent and in some cases a little bit lower than 4 percent. The bottom line here is that if the market continues to hold, which you saw in that first chart, it has been at very low levels even if it were to come up, you're always going to have a refinancing opportunity to consider each and every year as part of your overall bond program. With respect to this 2006 refunding, again, we're looking at refinancing about 9.7 of those 2008 bonds. Those outstanding interest rates currently range between 4 and 5 percent. When we refinance those with lower interest rate and take approximately $750,000 of your existing INS fund balance, pay off the principal with that amount, you're looking at net interest cost savings of approximately $2.5 million on this financing. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
What's your outlook on the interest rates?
We were talking about that before we got started. We believe they're going to remain low. The Fed's action in December, everyone was speculating that interest rates would run up. In fact, they've done the complete opposite. They have run down. They put chaos in the oil and gas market in other countries. We believe that most investment dollars are going to stay put in the municipal tax debt market, which is good for us. There's not a tremendous amount of supply either. The demand is there and supply is low. We feel like in short term, I say short term because that short term has been quite some time now, we anticipate they'll remain low. So the borrowing costs on your new bonds when we sell them, the first sale was well in our budget. We anticipate being able to refinance in the future and lock in interest rates that are below, which is in projection to the coming year.
Do you think it's feasible that the bond election was held the next two years? We can see interest rates below 4 percent still within that timeframe. Is that a...
I think that's very possible. I think if you listen to what the Fed is kind of slow playing now after their actions in December, the timing of the interest rate hikes, I think they will continue to slow play that to 2016. The good thing in our market is they've kind of built in, the investors and buyers of these bonds have kind of built in what the Fed is saying in advance. So I don't see if we'll ever see a major spike one way or the other.
Any other questions for further discussion? Is there a motion to review potential bond refunding plan and take action to adopt an order authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds, establishing the parameters for the refunding, and delegating authority to the administration to complete the refunding bond sale? Motion has been moved and seconded. There be no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion is approved. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Groves. Item four on the agenda is open forum. We have no one signed up for open forum. Item five on the agenda is closed meeting. Board will now meet in closed meeting under the authority of Texas Government Code Section 551.074 for Personnel Matters, Government Code 551.071 for Attorney Consultation, Government Code 551.082 for Student Discipline, Government Code 551.072 for Belittoration Regarding Purchase, Exchange, Lease, or Value of Real Property. Any action as a result of a closed session discussion will take place after the board regimemes an open meeting. The time is 6:49 PM. Board ended its closed meeting at 7:49 and will now regimeme an open session. Item six on the agenda is reports and proposals of board members. I believe we have a report from Mr. Mixon.
Yeah, I was attended a grassroots Region 6 meeting which has been a few months ago. elected to serve on the Legislative Advisory Council. I'll basically help set the priorities for legislation which has been going to take before legislators. We know some of what the governor and everyone else wants to press forward, but we had our first meeting this last weekend in Austin. I would have to say that I was a little setback by the number of other districts that have a little bit more liberal thought process as far as to some of the schools. So, but we will be meeting again and we'll finalize that. There are some good things on there and I'll try to get some more information. I guess to Ken and everyone, if you can share that with you guys as far as where we are in the priorities. Still in progress and going well.
Thank you, Mr. Chris.
Item seven on the agenda is superintendent's board. Mr. Gates.
Good evening, everyone. Things are happening. We've got the roofs. Remember, we put a roof package together in Kenney High School, Crippen, and Kings Manor. We'll take those bids on this Thursday. We had pretty good participation. At least 12 different companies picked up the bidder, so we're looking like we ought to be able to do a pretty good job there. Kings Manor, it is going to be out in June. We're finishing up the construction documents on that and so that work ought to start sometime in August. This is when we're doing the kitchen and cafeteria addition and then renovating inside the school. The early college, we are progressing with design there. We're probably about 80 percent complete with it, starting to meet with some folks and wrap things up. That's going out in September. Porter High School, as you know, took bids. That's up for approval tonight to be awarded so we can get started on that addition. And Aquatic Center, it bid last week. We've got good bids on it. We haven't selected a contractor yet, but we're about $100,000 on our budget on that. So everything's moving along pretty good. Got any questions?
All right, Mr. Shobler.
Good evening. We're excited about a new way that we're hoping to support teachers and we wanted to share that with you tonight. Are you starting? Teachers seldom get an opportunity to go into other teachers' classrooms. So we have great things happening. All of the teachers are on from 1 to 3. Like a wonderful evening. Let's see.
EOC is over at the bottom already. I can't get the video up, so I'm trying.
Is it that orange column?
Yeah, it is, but for some reason it won't. That's already over at the bottom. Oh, it is.
Yeah. Okay. So our teachers seldom get a chance to go into other teachers' rooms to see what the great things that are going on. And so what we've started doing is videotaping little clips of lessons and we started back in January. So Stuart Stanley, he's my partner, and he's been going into these classrooms with me. We videoed four more lesson segments today. So we wanted to show you, this is our first attempt, we wanted to show you a little bit about what it looks like. So if you can... I'm closing my arms. I'm counting to three. A wonderful evening. Let's see. One, two, three. Now, I have a really pretty desk. And I'm going to be showing you some things in my bag. And you need to try and remember what's in my bag. And if you want to whisper to your partner, hey, there's a car. So is that in your brain? Did you see a car? There is a ch... A question ready? Here's one. There is a bu... He's ready for the next day. I'm going to show you good singing. There is a... Let's see, a friendship is ready. And there is a snake. Now, I'm going to put this back in the bag and I want to be saying what we say. Snake. Car. Car. Snake. Bu... Ch... But we're going to just, we're going to call it roof. Can you turn that to roof? Elephant. Show me good sound. I'm waiting to show. Emily's ready. Show me good singing. Who can guess what is in my bag? Let me peek in and see. It starts with K and ends with R. Oh, what, oh, what can it... Can we, what do you think it is? Very good. It starts with K and it ends with R. And we put the sounds together and it is a... Everybody clap car. Three syllable. There you go. I know, but oh, and let me see who's ready. Okay, Scott. Who can guess what it is? Okay, so these lesson segments, some of this one is for our Literacy Academy. She's a literacy academy teacher. Some will be on classroom management. So you can see that she was redirecting the kids some of the time. So today, we videoed four more teachers and so Stuart's going to start working on editing that. So our library hopefully will continue to...
How will they be used?
Well, it depends. It depends. We have teachers that maybe struggle in one of the areas where we have a video clip and so we can share that with them. It's a lot easier for them to put it into practice if they can actually see it instead of just selling for the buy. And then we hope to use these with our brand-new teachers that we get this fall when we have that day with them so that we can show them some of our great teachers and how they handle different aspects of the classroom. Questions?
I will say that kindergarten teachers are a lot nicer now than they were in the eighties. Mine wasn't like that. I don't remember mine.
Good evening. I wanted to give you a little bit of an update on our first round of star testing. We had fifth and eighth grade results came back last week. What I did for you guys is I looked at the cohort group, how they performed in 2015 as fourth graders and how they performed as fifth and then seventh and eighth. And remember, fifth and eighth, we have three chances actually, but two chances for accountability. So we still have another round to go and that'll only get better, the results will. So if you look at fifth grade math, and this is a pretty difficult test, went from 69 percent to 74 percent. Are you doing this for me or are you...
I can.
Fifth grade reading, 69 percent to 71 percent. We're disappointed in that. We thought would be a little bit better, but I think the second round will be okay. Eighth grade math, 65 percent to 72 percent. And for reading, we had 69 percent to 78 percent, which we were pretty proud of that. Again, we have a second time for that. We don't have it broken down into sub-pops yet just because a second round is what really counts. So we'll make sure we get that to you when those results come in in the summer. I do want to share something with you though that's pretty interesting. Doing, looking at the data, in 1415, we tested 1,610 fifth and eighth graders. And look at what we tested this year with a difference of 332 new students to the district. And that's just in fifth and eighth. Our principals back here will attest to how difficult that is to take kids in that are brand-new from other districts. And these are older students. They've been in different situations. We have kids that come in from volatile situations and they have to fit into our rural language program, which is kind of a challenge for that. So that just kind of gives you an idea of the challenges. I also wanted to share with you some testing system issues. Mr. Franklin forwarded me a survey today that we're going to do through TASSA to basically share the problems that we've had with our testing system. Now, we went from Pearson, who's been doing it for as long as I can remember, to ETS, which is, they won the bid. And so Jana Lawrence is back there in the back.
I'm going to, she's on the front.
Oh, there she is. I asked her to come because she has been inundated with this information, basically because she's the region district contact person. She supports all of our area district coordinators and so she's hearing it on all levels. But here's the issues. They didn't release our online practice test until one week prior to the test. That means our special education students and our limited English students didn't get to practice on the module until one week before the test. And they're the only students that are taking an online test other than EOC. We had 20 online NCIC students were not able to submit their tests for scoring. Some of their answers were lost. ETS did not send materials and pre-coded answers until a week prior and that created a major issue for our campus coordinators. They had to go through all of those pre-coded materials with a fine tooth comb, which they were up here till late at night a lot of times. ETS did not release their online assessment, again, management test, one week prior. Some of the students' online test tickets did not work when they logged in to access the test. And this next one is the one that we're worried about the most. The results filed sent by ETS has missing data. And one part of our accountability rating, we call our index two, which is our growth measure. If a kid doesn't pass the test but grows a year, we get what we call a point, get a credit for it. It's called a growth measure. Well, in a lot of our campuses, we had kids that did not get a growth measure, although they had been with us last year or even in the state. So I asked the people in my, in our office to get two middle schools, one on each feeder pattern, to look and see what the issues are. At Witteridge Forest Middle School, we had 60 points missing. That's, that's in our book, that's huge. That's big. New County Middle, they had 35 missing points, but we need every point we can get. And so we're working to try to figure out what to do with that. We've got spreadsheets to send to the state, but we really don't know how they're going to fix that. We have missing confidential student reports. Some campus didn't receive CSR for tested students. And the support for ETS, it's rated an F. It's pretty sad. And so we just wanted you to know, if you get questions asked, if you have a chance to voice it to your friends.
Is obviously stated as a problem.
Yes, it is. Issues. The region four actually put out a survey, and we got the results of their issues today and mirrors our own, probably worse. We had, in one instance, we had EOC delivered to a church. Yeah. Not ours, but in other districts. And then they were delivered, their district APM, in a church covered with a tarp. So that's just the issues that we deal with. Any questions?
Thank you.
Just wanted to give you an update on our third-party benefits. As you may or may not know, our health insurance actually comes through the state, and we don't get a choice in that. But all of our third-party benefits, we work through a third-party administrator, things like our dental, our vision, other things like that. So we have, we have not really checked kind of other companies in quite some time, and we were not real happy with the company we're working with as far as the product that was helping us with all the new ACA requirements. So that caused us to kind of look a little bit, and we had four other companies come in besides the one we're using, and we looked at some different products, and we are going to make the move to a different company next year for our third-party benefits. The new company is called TCG. They happen to be a parent company or a partner company, really the same company as we're already using for our 457 and our investments for our employees. So we're familiar with the company already, and it will be the same sign-in eventually. So just wanted to kind of give you guys an update on that. They have guaranteed us two or three years with almost all their products before there will be any chance of a rate increase on the products. Now, obviously, there may be different companies, but, so there shouldn't be any disruption really to our employees. And all of our current policies, like if you hold a cancer policy right now, you can stay with that company even when we go to another third-party manager. So that's how those things work. So just wanted to keep you on the loop on that, and if you guys get questions, you'll know what's going on with that. Call John Everett. Call Liz James. Okay? Thank you.
Item eight on the agenda is the consent calendar consisting of consideration of minutes, consideration of financial reports, consideration of purchasing reports, consideration of personnel reports, consideration of authentic appraisal system for teachers during their 16th, 17th school year, and consideration of donations. Are there any questions or further discussion? Vote on those items separately. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar except for item D six and item D 10?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. There be no further discussion. A vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion is approved. Is there a motion to approve item D six?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. There be no further discussion. A vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion is approved. Item D 10, is there a motion to approve item D 10 for the consent calendar?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. There be no further discussion. A vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion is approved. Item nine is going to take care of it. Item 10 on the agenda is consideration of approval of a change to New County ISD local criteria for identification of students classified as at risk and dropping out of school.
The state gives us a list of 13 criteria to be qualified for being considered at risk of dropping out of school. That designation is important because it allows us to spend certain monies, namely state comp ed money, on those programs and services for those students. So we have those 13 criteria adopted by the state. We want to add to that, it takes board approval, and we're recommending that we add dyslexia to that list. That will allow us to use our state comp ed money to pay for dyslexia programs and services to our students, so.
Have any questions for further discussion? Is there a motion to approve change to New County ISD local criteria for identification of students classified as at risk of dropping out of school?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. There be no further discussion. A vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion is approved. Item 11 on the agenda is consider purchase of a parcel of land consisting of approximately 15.6 acres as an elementary school campus or other school site.
Yes, sir. In the past, we, the board needs to give Mr. Franklin the authority to sign a contract for a piece of property. So what this is, is let you know that we have an option on a piece of property, we signed a letter of intent to purchase this piece of property. What it does now is gives us the ability to negotiate the price of the property, the amount of property, it says approximately 15 acres. Once we get that done, then Mr. Franklin can sign the contract. We go into due diligence, check the piece of property out, and we'll bring it back to all of these, Mr. Johnson will sign if we decide to purchase the property.
Any questions for further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the purchase of a parcel of land consisting of approximately 15.6 acres as an elementary school campus or other school site?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. There be no further discussion. A vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion is approved. Item 12 on the agenda is consider amendment of an existing easement along the portion of Kiefer Crossing Middle School site.
Instead of Kiefer Crossing football field, there's a concrete road, paved road, that leads back into the old truck stop up there. Mr. Ragnar owns that piece of property that is the truck stop, and he has an easement granted to him or with that property years ago. And they're getting ready to develop that property. What he'd like is to amend his easement so that he can do improvements on it, put a sign on it, landscape it, do those type of things, so he can develop that piece of property back there. It'll always be an easement to him. Alls he wants to do is improve it, and he'll maintain the road and take care of it, make sure it's taken care of. So we're just amending the easement that's already there.
Any questions for further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the amendment of an existing easement along the portion of the Kiefer Crossing Middle School site?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. There be no further discussion. A vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grubman. Item 13 on the agenda is consideration to award construction contract for addition and renovations to Porter High School to GTT construction. Mr. Gates.
Yes, we had, you know, we got pretty good bids on that, although even though we were a couple hundred thousand over, we had several bids. We feel like it's a good price for whatever we want to do, for GTT, four, five projects in Blue Park. I think they can handle this kind of projects, so we're asking for two.
Aticonra? GTT Aticonra? Aticonra?
Yes. Yeah, it'd be a lot more.
Yeah. How much coverage do we eat on the bid?
I think eight bids.
It's pretty strong for renovation.
Good, good, strong coverage.
Any questions for further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the construction contract for addition and renovations to Porter High School to GTT construction?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. There be no further discussion. A vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. And I abstain. Motion is approved. Item 14 on the agenda is consideration of a deductive change order from Gamma Construction for renovations and additions to Child Nutrition Warehouse.
Our final project on the 20-trail bond. We came out pretty good on this one, and should be able to give you some final account when we do the next board meeting. We're probably still, we're pretty confident, still got a couple hundred thousand left over to take care of some other little projects, projects we're going to do, so that's the final G.
So what is this deductive change order to make?
Twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand.
Lots of numbers.
Any questions for further discussion?
That's what it says in this book. No, that's not the person.
Any questions for further discussion? Is there a motion to approve deductive change order from Gamma Construction for renovations and additions to Child Nutrition Warehouse? Motion has been moved and seconded. There be no further discussion. A vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. I abstain. Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Item 50 on the agenda is consideration of approval of a missed school days waiver to the instructional calendar for two days missed from recent storms and flooding.
As you're aware, last week, we had some heavy rain, had to miss two days of school. The commissioner has since put out a waiver for two days missed school that we complied for. That does take board action, and I have to give the date of that in that application. Alternative to this, or that, are that we would have to either go to school two more days or add some minutes to all of the existing school days for the remainder of the year. So we think it's best for our district to take advantage of the waiver. Ask you for your approval.
Thank you. Any question for further discussion?
Is there a motion to approve the missed school days waiver to the instructional calendar for the two days missed from the recent storms and flooding?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. There be no further discussion. A vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion is approved. There be no further business. This meeting is adjourned at 8:16.